Welcome to the October 8, 2020 Meeting of the Town of Southampton Planning Board. In accordance with the Governor's Executive Order 202.1 and until further notice, all the Board's meetings will be held remotely via video conference. So we ask the public to continually check the town's website for updates and new information. Phil, can we have a roll call, please?
Certainly Chair LaFaro.
President.
Vice Chair Thinterty.
President.
Secretary is here. Board Member Zuccarelli.
Zuccarelli.
Present.
Hey there. Board Member Long.
Present.
Board Member Blaney.
Present.
We're missing Gloria.
Yeah.
So.
I'll let her in as soon as she comes in.
Okay. You have a quorum.
Wonderful. Can you please join in for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag. We have three public hearings this evening. We have applicants and members of the public standing by via Zoom webinar, which is being moderated by CTV. Charles Certain will be holding the speakers in a virtual, sorry.
Virtual.
In a virtual waiting room until it's their time to give testimony before the Board. A reminder that applicants, agents, and members of the public speaking should state their name and address for the record. A further reminder that despite the Zoom environment, all comments should be directed to the Board and not to other participants. The link to participate in this meeting via Zoom can be found on the town's website. This meeting is also being livestreamed on the town's website on the Town Clerk's Meeting Portal. If you're having difficulty accessing the meeting, please visit the Town Clerk's Meeting Portal and click on the instructions link. Public comments can be made via Zoom, by email, or by uploading them to the Town Clerk's portal on the Planning Board's page. You will see on that page a button you can click to upload your comments. Board members who must recuse themselves from any application will state so on the record and will be removed from the meeting until the end of the hearing. Unless otherwise stated at the end of each hearing, these applicants will remain open, applications will remain open for written comments from the applicant and the public for 30 days. Those comments can be made by email, by uploading your comments to the Town Clerk's portal under the Planning Board Meeting page. Additionally, in accordance with the Governor's orders, these hearings will be recorded and transcribed and made available to the public. So Gloria is here. Welcome.
Yeah, I was on, but Charles wasn't recognizing me. So I went out and went back in. I apologize.
But it's okay. Not a problem.
I paid him for that.
Okay, number one is Shinnecock Hardware East. Matthew? Do we have?
We do, Madam Chair. We have jurisdiction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Charles, can you let Kevin Springer in, please?
He's in.
Thank you. Now get reading. Notice the public hearing. Please take notice that in accordance with the Governor's Executive Order Number 202.1, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, October 8, 2020 at 6:00 p.m. via video conferencing to consider the site plan special exception application entitled Shinnecock Hardware East. This application is for the installation of a 1,000 gallon above ground propane tank accessory to an existing hardware store located on a 39,074 square foot parcel located within the HB zoning district and within a New York State archaeologically sensitive area situated at 849 County Road 39, Hamlet of Tuckahoe, Suffolk County Tax Department Number 900-157-2-28.3. As grant, a transcript of said hearing will be provided at a later date, and the public will have an opportunity to see and hear the meeting live and to provide comments. The public can watch the live meeting on the Town Clerk's website under the Planning Board Meeting tab or participate through the Zoom app. If any interested members of the public would like to provide comments on the public hearing, comments can be submitted to the Planning Board via mail, email, or uploaded to the Town Clerk's portal prior to the meeting when additional and updated information on ways to view and participate will be posted. In addition, the record will remain open after the public hearing for the submission of written comments. Please check the October 8, 2020 meeting agenda posted on the Town Clerk's website as the hearing date approaches for further instructions and to access the virtual meeting and for any updated information in the event of any cancellation of this meeting. The application without further notice will be held at the next Planning Board meeting. Jackie LaFaro, Chairperson by order of the Planning Board of the Town of Southampton, Philip Keith, Secretary.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I will bring up a site plan and aerial for you guys. So this is the aerial, Town County Road 39. And this is our site plan.
I've got a blank here.
Blank. Blank.
Was there? There we go.
It's there.
Try again.
Can we see the aerial to start with?
Yep. How's that?
Oh, that's good. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, good.
And then the site plan, I'll zoom out so you guys can see. This is the tank right here. And I'll turn it over to Kevin.
Okay, as Matt said, we're looking to install this. This is exactly the same that we've installed in the past. We put this one at the Shinnecock Hardware in Hampton Bays. It will be the exact same setup. I don't know if any of you are familiar with it. There's not a whole lot to go through. It's basically a 12 by 24 concrete slab. There's a 1,000 gallon propane tank with a slight little filling setup on it, and it is enclosed by a six-foot chain link fence. And basically, it's to, for customers to come in and trade in and out of propane tanks and/or buy new ones and fill them up right there instead of having to store filled ones on property. I don't know if you have any questions. I don't have a lot to offer because it's really pretty straightforward. But I'm here, so.
Okay.
Just, I'm sorry, just for the record, identify yourself, so.
Yes, my apologies. Kevin Springer, Dynamic Legal. I'm the agent for Shinnecock Hardware East.
Thank you.
My address is 61 Channing Cross, Hampton Bays, New York.
Thanks. And so all the safety precautions that you've done before are on this side as well?
Yes, the whole, it'll be the exact same setup. And will be also monitored, it's monitored regularly every year by the Fire Marshal. So there's, it's a working, it's a working setup that's been used in Hampton Bays for, I believe we're going on almost 10 years now, and we've never had any safety issues. And as far as at night, it's locked completely. There is a little bit of barbed wire over the top of it just to be on the safe side so that nobody really has any crazy ideas.
What about if somebody drove and hit, and hit it? Because you just said a chain link fence, which.
No, well, right in, in front of it where he has his hand now and actually towards the, if you look to the west side where his hand is, those stanchions are actually eight-inch galvanized stanchions filled with concrete. So it's, it's going to take a lot to get through it.
So it's like a bollard, really, right?
Yeah, that's a horse bollard.
Yes. And I do, I don't know if I can actually show you the picture that I have a picture here of the Hampton Bays one, but I don't know, I'm not sure I know how to share it with you. That's, that would be the, let me just, let me just see if I could try something here.
Matt, you want to?
Yeah, it's not going to let me.
Okay.
I can send it to Matt real quick if you.
Anybody need to see it? Yeah, I understand what you're describing. I was hoping that that was there.
Yeah.
And just to be sure, it's not self-service?
No, absolutely not. And I know that for a reason because my son man's the one at the Hampton Bays one. That's his job on weekends, so. Nobody can, nobody can get in, in and out of it without the, without an employee.
Right.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to close with a 30-day written comment period. Motion by Zuccarelli, second by Dennis. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, seven in favor. Okay, thank you, Kevin.
All right, thank you all. Have a good evening.
You too.
All right.
Moving on to the Atlantic Golf Course.
Yes, if you, Charles can make sure that Tony Panza's in?
Okay.
And Cassel, you have?
We do, Madam Chair. We have an affidavit of posting.
Great, thank you.
And then I guess Brian Matthews wanted to be, speak as a person of the public.
Brian Matthews?
I think that was his name, yes.
There he is. Is Tony, Tony there?
I don't see him.
I don't see Tony.
From Alexandria King Panza?
Oh, yeah, that's, it might say.
A.K., yep.
Okay.
Great. I'm going to read the notice in the meantime.
Okay.
And I'm going to skip the second part because Matt's already read it into the record, okay? Please take notice that in accordance with the Governor's Executive Order Number 202.1, a pre-submission conference will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, October 8, 2020 at 6:00 p.m. via video conferencing to consider the pre-submission application titled Atlantic Golf Club Employee Housing. The subject project is for the site plan wetlands permit application to construct a 6,500 square foot building for employee housing accessory to an existing golf course on a 203 acre parcel located in the CR 80 zoning district on the north side of Scuttle Hole Road, 1040 Scuttle Hole Road, Hamlet of Bridgehampton, Suffolk County Tax Department Number 900-49-1-7.1.
Hello, sorry, I forgot to change my name on there. It's my wife's account.
Tony, state your name and affiliation for the record, please.
Tony Panza, architect for the Atlantic Golf Club Staff Housing Project, 29 Turtle Pond Road, Southampton.
So give us a brief overview of the application.
Okay. Can you bring up?
Yep.
This is the aerial. This is part of the site plan right there.
So we're looking, the Atlantic would like to build a staff housing. And they're looking to do, these are individual right now, I think as we discussed last time we met, most of their rooms are doubles. And in the age of COVID, that doesn't work out so well because they have to go down to one per room, so they're 50%. So the idea would be to put in 16 rooms. There's 10 on the first floor. So we have a 3,650 foot print. And then the smaller second floor to try to reduce the scale. And that has the six rooms up there. They, you can see all the utilities there. The setbacks are all noted on there to meet all the setbacks, including the wetland, front yard setback, side yard setback. We had previous discussions about the number of spaces. And there certainly, the club is fine with putting in the code required as the zoning does. But just because it is staff housing and not all staff has cars, we've shown the paved spaces that you see there, seven plus a handicap, and then grass spaces over to the east of that. The, if you continue into the, I think that view there is good. It's existing, it's a field, so we're not looking to take down anything. It's just fescue. And very minor plantings. And the idea would be to continue the hedge row, not a privet, it's a hedge row that is along Scuttle Hole Road to the east or to the north, depending on which way you're angled. And that's just because each of the structures on that side, they're broken up with the, with the hedge row. But then we'd like to stop the hedge row so that as you're going west or southwest on Scuttle Hole Road, you can still retain the vista out to Shorts Pond, which is, you see one of the cars there in front of the driveway. As they continue down, the privet stops and you can see right to the pond. And so we think that's a benefit for everybody. There would be some additional plantings on the east side adjacent to the only neighbor. The property, you see the squiggly line that's just above the building there. That's just the surveyor denoting where the trees, current trees are. But that's Atlantic's property up above, but we don't want to go into that area because it's natural. And there's a, there's a ravine in there, so we want to stay in the, in the field. And if you continue on there, we can look at the plans quickly. And actually, sorry, while, while you're on that, I don't know if you have the other site plan that I had sent through there. When we had previously met, there was the discussion about possibly going with not a two-story building, but two single-story buildings or rotating it. And those were two designs that we started out with, because we were hoping for that. But, and it should be in the file there, when we do two one-story structures, because of the wetland setback, the front yard setback, and not wanting to go into the trees, we don't have enough room to put in the septic and the parking, so we went to the second story. And then we can't rotate because of that swale drainage area towards the back. So those drawings are in the file to be able to look at.
Are you putting in an IA system?
Yes, yeah, that's on the drawing that's just up, up above. We've, there's the IA system there. And we'd like to put solar panels. We have that noted on the exterior elevations. And we're also hoping to put in a geothermal system. And that is out to Suffolk County for the approval of the septic system. And we have to go to DEC for the approval of the geothermal well.
Will the geothermal will be a closed system?
It will be a, so when we talk about geothermal systems, closed and open versus inside and outside, it would be a, on the exterior of the building, we would be, have a supply well that goes into a plate exchanger. So it comes just inside the building wall, goes into a large plate exchanger, and then goes directly back out. So that it only comes into the building to go through the exchanger, which is copper, and then back out into the, into the return well. We're not taking it through the building.
Yeah, that's not what I was asking. My understanding, and maybe I don't have all the information, but there are systems where you basically use some sort of non-aquifer water, and it stays reused within the system as opposed to consistently pulling water out of the aquifer and then putting it back in heated.
Yeah, so the closed system you're speaking of would be a tubing that would be driven down into the ground and filled with, let's call it a jelly. And we would not be doing that type of system. It would be bringing the water up from a supply well and putting it back down through a discharge well. But it's not crossing that with anything inside the building.
Yeah, no, I have, I have some concerns about that because we're basically using the aquifer to heat the building or cool it. And the aquifer has a limited capacity. And I know it's more expensive to do a closed system, but my point.
Well, that's why we're at the DEC. They're the ones that govern the wells and asking them.
This disturbed land, the land where you're building here, is this already disturbed?
That's correct. It's a field.
And is there any archaeological concerns on this land?
It's, nothing that came up. It's, it's been a field that has been under, well, this was part of the farm prior to Atlantic putting the golf course in. And then since it's been Atlantic, they've just mowed the field twice a year to keep it down.
Has there ever been, is this in an, I'm sorry, I don't have, is this in an archaeologically sensitive area? I can look that up while you go on. I'd appreciate that.
Can you show us the aerial, Claire?
Can I show you the aerial? Sure. I don't have the big one. I have the zoomed in one just because it's, the property is so large. But this is the area in question here. But I'll look up.
And that's a private home right next to it, correct?
Yes.
Go ahead.
East, to the east is a private home.
Yes, that's, there's, there's one resident that is abutting the property. And the club met with them to inform them of the project.
Do you anticipate year-round occupancy?
Sorry, Dennis?
Do you anticipate year-round occupancy or just seasonal?
Most, if there ends up with being year-round, it would be maybe two people. So in general, it's seasonal.
Okay, and if workers, if there is year-round occupancy or that left have their families, school-aged children and so forth, living inside?
No, no, these are just single occupancy rooms.
Okay.
And Tony, what's the purpose for the propane tank? That you have on the plan?
Tony, can you hear that?
I think you froze.
I missed that, sorry.
What's the purpose of the propane tank?
For domestic heating, the hot water, just for the shower.
It doesn't show on the plan, but I'm sure you're going to surround it with something to keep people from crashing into it or.
Oh, yes. Yeah. Yeah, actually, the IA system, because we just received notification back from Suffolk County that because it's on a commercial property, they would like a fence or bollards around that as well, even though it's on the other side away from the park. So we're hoping that it's not some ugly yellow bollards that the health department wants.
So we have someone waiting to speak, Brian Matthews?
Yes, just one second. Robin, to answer your question, it is not in the, it's outside that, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Matthews.
Hi, can everybody hear me okay?
Fine.
Okay, great, thank you. Good evening, Miss Chairman, members of the Board. Brian Matthews from Matthews, Kirsten Cooley, 241 Pentagon Road, East Hampton, New York, 11937. I am here on behalf of Mary Ann Gabrielle, who is, who along with her family are the owners of the property you just referring to. I believe it's 1130 Scuttle Hole Road. It is the, the residence that is immediately to the, to the east or the north, however way we want to say it, that the property, residents that immediately enjoys this property, this project. This is their full-time residence. And, you know, while we certainly understand and appreciate, you know, the desires and needs to have employee housing, I think by any view of the plans, by any view of the surveys and aerials and a site inspection of this property, the significant impact that putting a 16-unit multi-residential structure with eight, anywhere from eight to 16 parking spaces immediately adjacent to their single-family residence will have a tremendous impact on her, her family, and their property and their ability to use the same. I think that that impact is, would be undeniable in many ways. And so, I mean, if you look at not, what I think is SP 11 on the site plan, I think you really get, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the images that are included, and understandably so, are focused just on the project at issue. But you really get a clear picture about how our client's property would be uniquely impacted by this. When you look at, when you look at that, that image in particular. And so, you know, we'll, we'll certainly put in our written comments and responses at the proper time. But in sum, it's our view that, you know, from an environmental standpoint, from a neighbor impact standpoint, and from a community character standpoint, putting this project in this particular location, just, you know, in our view, should be a non-starter and wouldn't meet the, the site plan standards required under the town code. And so that's, in sum and substance, that's, that's our client's view. And there's significantly concern about this project and the impact it's going to have on them and their property.
Okay. Any other comment you would like to make, Tony, or anybody from the Board?
Certainly not our intention to disturb our neighbors. So that's why we were, had gone over and met, made them aware of the project, talked about planting in between. As we mentioned, that this, we wanted to reduce the number of actually asphalt spaces because we don't feel that the, and on the application, you'll see the site plan is to hope that we can have a path from the housing to the club without going out on the Scuttle Hole Road, which would be reducing the need to have automobiles.
And so you'll have buffering on that east side?
Yes.
Between you and us. Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, hearing none. We'll entertain a motion for a 30-day written comment period by Zuccarelli, second by Dennis. All in favor?
Aye.
Seven in favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening all.
Have a good evening.
Moving on to the Watermill Village Townhouses.
We have further notice, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Claire, you have some people to let in?
Yes, Jeff Sutcheman, Eric Bregman, Tim Rumpf, PWGC, I think. And Jeff can maybe let us know if there's anybody else to be let in. I'll read the notice first.
There's Brian, yep. Claire, yep.
Please take notice that in accordance with the Governor's Executive Order Number 202.1, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, October 8, 2020 at 6:00 p.m. via video conferencing to consider the site plan application entitled Watermill Village Townhouses. The request is for a modification application for the site plan approval for the construction of 38-unit townhouse complex. Four units to be designated affordable workforce housing units with associated structures including a swimming pool, clubhouse, and sewage treatment plant on three parcels which total 6.45 acres in the Hamlet Office zoning district located with frontage on Montauk Highway in Dona Avenue, Hamlet of Watermill, Suffolk County Tax Department Numbers 900-114-1-46, 48.1, and 51.
Okay, who, Jeff, are you going to speak to the application? And can you state your name, please, and affiliation for the record?
Jeff Sutcheman, 174 Two Halls of Water Road, East Hampton. And, and actually Timothy Rumpf will be speaking for us from Areas Design. I believe he's on.
Thank you, Jeff. Tim Rumpf from Areas Design, 38 Eugene Street, Southampton. Good evening, Madam Chair, and.
Welcome.
I haven't seen you in a long time. Probably haven't seen me either. I'm sure you're very familiar with the site, but this is for the public. It's, this site plan is a 6.45 acre site located at the intersection of Dona Avenue and Montauk Highway. And in Watermill, it was previously approved in the spring of 2019 for 38 townhouse uses with accessory structures. Since then, or during that time, 24 units had been approved with two car garages. And during that approval process, we had spoken to the ability to revise the site plan and revise the floor plans to include a first-floor living space. revise the site plan and revise the floor plans to include a first-floor living space in one of those garage units. And based on the current marketing and analysis that Mr. Sutcheman has done, the floor plans have been revised to show that first-floor living space. Thus, are, are coming back to you for the modification of the site plan. Uh, the footprints of the units have remained the same. There's been a slight modification to the, to the driveways and site plan, which has actually caused a slight reduction in the amount of lot area, lot coverage. And that is why we're here tonight to see if any of the public had any comments or any questions for us.
Are we looking at the revised, uh, plan, Claire?
Yes.
Yep.
It's pretty packed, isn't it?
So, just, just so I understand, we're, we're getting rid of the garages? We're, we're putting a living room in the garage? I, I don't.
We're taking, um, Phil, we're taking one of the garage spaces and creating a, a first-floor bedroom.
So this was be a garage here, so it would have been a two-car garage here.
Ah, I see.
So wherever they have a two-car garage?
Yes.
One, how many of the units have two-car garages?
24.
24, so you'll be adding 24 living spaces.
24.
Living.
24 bedrooms, yeah.
Bedrooms.
Oh, bedrooms.
And septic on this is an IA system on, so what is, what is the septic?
I, I asked that question at, when we were doing the, the pre, pre.
Yeah, how does this affect that?
Yeah.
There is a sewage treatment plant that has been approved by Suffolk County, and, um, we have a letter in the file from, uh, uh, P W Grosser, Brian Grogan, that, that we have enough capacity in the approved plant that would allow us to add the bedrooms.
It's a lot of bedrooms.
Yeah, it's 24 more bedrooms. So you have the, Suffolk County gave you the, the flow requirements for that, or?
Yes.
Huh, okay.
If you'd like, Brian is on the, is on the call with us. He can speak to that if you'd like.
Sure, Brian, go ahead.
Sure. Brian Grogan with P W Grosser Consulting, uh, 630 Johnson Avenue, uh, Bohemian, New York. Yeah, so the health department calculates the, uh, flow for these based upon the overall square footage of the unit. Um, and their flow category says that anything over 1,200 square feet is equal to 300 gallons per day. Uh, the previous approval was already at that same flow rate. So therefore, actually, even though we're adding a bedroom, there was no increase in square footage, or sorry, there was no increase in flow. So the, the sewage treatment plant we have designed is sufficient for the proposed use.
Okay, and, um, you have 24 units that had double garages, and the balance of them is what, another 14 to bring it to 38? So you have 14 units with one garage, right?
Yes, with single garages. So now all of the units are single garages.
And there's no change in, in those?
No.
And no change in the materials, according to this letter?
No.
And you have slight modifications, building coverage, parking, lot coverage? Okay.
Claire, could you, can you just walk me through, I can see, um, it looks like the unit on the left-hand side, you've got one garage, and then what's next to it looks like a skinny garage with a bathroom. I don't see a bedroom.
This is the first floor. This is the first floor of the middle C unit.
Okay.
And so the second floor, I think I should show it now, it has the, the three bedrooms.
I thought the extra bedroom was on the first floor.
So.
Could you just show me what?
I'm sorry, Claire, it would be those eight units on the, on the ends?
So this always had one car garage, this, this unit.
Right.
This was one of the ones that didn't change.
And the one to the left?
That's the change.
And where was the garage before? I'm having a hard time.
Just approximately here, right? Am I correct?
Yes. Okay, so that's just the bathroom.
Right, and this would have been not, you know, a master suite.
Yeah, they, they reconfigured the whole floor plan.
Well, that's what I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah.
So did you?
I'm trying to see the old garage there.
So did you take more space in the garage to accommodate this bedroom?
The footprints did change, right?
There was living space there before. We've just taken the garage space to make it an appropriate size for a, a bedroom with a bathroom on the first floor.
So what was there before?
I believe there was just a sitting room at that point.
Okay.
You've installed a bedroom and you've installed an additional bathroom?
Yes.
Yes.
And according to the Suffolk County Health Department, you have sufficient flow?
Yes.
This is the letter, this is the letter they're referring to. And I can give you a copy. I can send this to the planning board after the meeting, okay?
Yep, yep. So what are these units square footage-wise now with the other bedroom?
I'm not specifically sure what the actual square footage is, but the, the footprint of the, of the buildings that are shown on the site plan have not changed.
They don't change, right?
They don't change.
The square footage of these units change?
Well, the configuration, we've added space, we've taken space out of the garage, the two-car garage, and added it as living space. That's the only change. The, there's no change in the footprint that was previously approved. It's just a reconfiguration of the living space within the footprint.
Okay. Great.
Just wanna show you the, um, the appearance too, so you just have a feel for that. This is the typical unit.
So the, the garage, there's no garage door now on those, uh, large units, right?
Right, it's just the single.
And what are you replacing it with? A window or what?
Yeah, if you move to the left underneath the elevation for A, A dash three to the left,
Yeah.
that would be, that would have been a garage door. Now there's a window.
I see, okay. Not having an overlay, it's tricky to read, but I see what you're saying.
Yes.
Yeah, basi- basically what you've done is you've taken the garage and made it into a bathroom, so that you can then use other space that was already livable to make it into a bedroom.
In, in essence, that's, yes.
Yeah.
It makes it easy for me to digest what you're doing.
That's, that's, that's fine.
Uh, any other questions, or are there any people from the public who want to speak?
Madam Chair, we had a note that the, uh, Mr. Doug Alnick, you have him, okay?
Hello? Mr. Alnick?
He appears to be muted.
Charles, can you unmute him?
I am doing my best.
Oh, there you are.
But he has unmuted.
Can you unmute yourself, Mr. Alnick? There's a icon in the lower left, it has a microphone. And if there's a, a bar through it, you're muted, just tap it, and it will unmute you. There you go.
Yeah, hi.
Hi, good.
Okay, so, I live on Nowadonna Avenue, there's one of two, I'm one of two residential homes. The house is going to be swallowed by this complex. Not literally, but figuratively, and I can deal with that. I mean, I've lived here 35 years. This has been going on for 34 years, since Philip Young purchased this property. So here I am, and it's finally come to pass. My concern is water. I have a well, and I'm concerned with the, the water. We don't have public water. I'm assuming that these units will be public water. I'd like to know if the water, public water is coming down Nowadonna Avenue. And if so, will my home and the neighbor's home, 44 Nowadonna Avenue, my neighbor, I'm at 54 Nowadonna, if we will be hooked up, or at least have the, um, choice to be hooked up to public water? That's my real big concern is the water. Granted, there's gonna be increased traffic on Nowadonna Avenue. There's going to be light pollution, there's going to be everything that goes with a complex of this size. Most of which is negative. But that's progress. So, my question really, as I just stated, is the water issue more than anything.
Uh, who, Brian, would you respond to that, or Tim, or Jeff, someone respond?
Brian, Brian could respond to that.
Okay, Brian? You'll be bringing water in?
Sure, yeah, the, the, the subject property will have public water. Um, I'm not 100% certain with respect to going back with the water authorities to exactly where we're gonna make that connection, whether we're gonna come down with the main extension on Noindoa, or if it's gonna be an actual, um, water service loop coming off of Montauk Highway. If it does come down Noindoa, we can, in talking to the water authority, it's possible that that water main extension would extend in front of those two homes, which would provide the ability for those homes to connect to public water.
Okay. And if they don't?
So. You're not saying definitively that there will be water coming down Nowadonna Avenue, is that what I heard?
Correct, it's up, I have to, we have to further discuss that with the water authority as to exactly where they want us to either make a, make a tap and just serve this one development with a loop, or if they want a, a water main extension on Noindoa.
So assuming. Yes.
I'm sorry, what?
No, Mr. Brian, what is your best guess about, for servicing such a large development? That they would want a separate tap?
Uh, I mean, it, it, it kinda depends. I mean, it, we have, we have water availability letters from them, we do have water available to us. We have it planned as an internal loop right now. Um, it's just a matter of where we land that final connection.
That.
So all that sewage goes into that?
That really doesn't answer my question. I, you know, that, my biggest concern, and, yeah, obviously, I prefer this doesn't happen. It's going to happen. I've lived here 35 years. I don't plan on moving. We need access to public water, myself and my next-door neighbor. If you look at the map, the, the site plan, we are swallowed figuratively by this complex. If you look at the site plan, you've got six acres of land. My home sits on roughly 80 by 80 feet. A postage stamp. And the, I'm not can't finding the word, but the, the chances of my water being affected, I would say, are 50/50.
More than that.
There you are. Site plan.
Yes.
Sure, just one second.
Those are the two parcels that dip right into this property.
Actually.
Okay, there are two houses.
There are two houses, correct.
Where's, where's the actual site plan of the, of the buildings and so forth? Oh, there it is, okay.
So with a sewage plant, with a public pool, with, I'm assuming these have basements? I'm taking a guess.
And 24 more bathrooms.
You're adding bedrooms and bathrooms now, this is news to me tonight. I'm willing, I've got to accept all the pollutions to go with this complex. Obviously, this has been going on decades. So we're not addressing, obviously, the, the traffic studies that say there's gonna be no traffic impact at all.
No light pollution at all.
Et cetera, et cetera. I've, I've gotta have public water.
Well, here's a, one concept, I'm just looking at the site plan here, is, is to establish some sort of easement, maybe at the, um, maybe at the terminus of the eastern, that eastern stub road, where either a service line or a main extension could be brought out to Noindona. Service line being the two taps you would need to your houses.
Right.
Or an actual service line where the water authority would punch through. I don't know where your houses line up to that tap street.
Well, I don't either, but being the way the world works, people and companies and public utilities will take often the path of least resistance. In which case, that would be tapping off Montauk Highway.
Yeah.
And that, that's not acceptable to me or to my neighbor.
So, so looking at that, you see that site plan there, where are your houses in relation to that site plan?
Right there. Right there, those two houses.
White spots.
The white, the white, uh, right.
So that water main is basically running in the, in the street right behind your houses. Why couldn't a couple of taps be set up and brought over to your house?
Correct. No, the, and that's something that we can definitely discuss with the water authority as we move forward with that portion of it. If we, we're gonna try to push the, for the water main to come down Noindoa, so they can be served off of Noindoa. But if that is not an option, that was an option I discussed with Mr. Sutcheman last week about potentially running an easement off of our internal water loop, basically through the rear of those two properties.
Right.
It's a little out of the norm, but if that's the way that we can get water down there, then we can certainly provide that water connection through.
Except you're gonna hit our septic system or our cesspools for the overflow of the septic system.
Yeah, we've got.
The property is very small.
We've got.
Correct. We'd have, we'd have, obviously, things we have to work, we have to work through over there. And that's why, again, if we can push the water authority towards installing a main down Noindoa, that's what we'll do.
Where, where is, on the site plan, where is the sewage, uh, plant on the site plan?
The lower right corner.
Okay, okay.
Western corner. When, Brian, when do you think you'll have some determination?
Uh, I'll reach out to them again tomorrow to follow up, but I'm, I'm not 100% certain when it'll get back to me with the exact answer.
Yes.
Mr. Alnick, where's your septic on your house? Is it in the front or the back?
Yeah, we've got two cesspools and a septic system in the back.
In the back.
Yeah, in the back.
Where the smaller?
Where the smaller piece, right there.
Right.
A hook-in from Noindoa, right?
You'd have to hook in from Nowadonna.
Yeah, well, as a.
So we could, as long as you can get your separate, what, what, what is it, four-foot separation?
It's 10-foot separation from a water line to a septic. So, we, we can, we can figure out a way to do that if need be, but we'll push for the water authority to install the main on Noindoa, so we can make our tap off of there and water can be provided to these two individuals.
And we'll, and we'll do our best to bring these guys water. That, that will be our.
But that is doing your best. That's not a yes or no that we will have water.
We gotta, we gotta settle this here with our board, is my, my point.
I'm sorry, what?
We've gotta settle, I, I agree with you, Mr. Alnick. We have to settle this here with our board.
Yeah, okay, okay, fine, no, I'm just.
I mean, the most sense could possibly be shooting that easement right along the two boundary lines, providing you can get that separation. And that way that the service lines would go to the front of the house and then branch off or branch into the sides of each house. You know what I'm saying?
Correct, yeah.
But those, those easements have to be executed and, and recorded as part of this site plan, so that.
I would, yeah, I mean, a word is just a word.
Right.
It's gotta be written in paper.
You want, you want certainty, that if you, that at any given time you decide you want that service, you don't have to, to approach some private property owner to get it and just put your service.
Okay, well, you've.
So where do I go? So where do I go from here?
We've heard your concerns, and we're gonna address it in our approval process.
Okay.
All right.
It's a very important issue.
And I, I think, I think you've heard that the applicant is more than willing to try to work with you, so that's
Okay, fine, okay.
Good, I'm glad you came.
Okay, thank you.
And made your, made your appeal.
Okay.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
And thank your wife.
Public hearings.
Thank your wife.
We have public hearings, see?
Yeah, this was great, thank you.
Good. Any other questions on the board? If not, um
Motion to close?
Motion to close with a 30-day written comment period by Dennis, second by Zuccarelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Extension, seven in favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Motion by Dennis, second by Phil. All in favor?
Aye.
Hold tensions? We have it, we are adjourned.